Okay, so now we're gonna have. What's the matter?
Go ahead. I just left it. You're good.
You having computer issues? Okay. We're going to call to order the committee of the whole meeting. We're gonna forego the pledge of allegiance, but we do need to do the roll again.
Mrs. Albright.
Here.
Mrs. Bell.
Here.
Mrs. Godfrey.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mrs. Olson.
Here.
Mr. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Strobel.
Here.
And Mrs. Thompson.
Here.
Eight are present, one is absent.
Okay. All right, so I'm gonna tell you, I was surprised that nobody got up to talk before we voted, so.
Did we go in over your.
Yeah.
We don't cover.
We can't.
I read it all aloud. You know, I read all the, I read the procedures aloud, you know, I mean.
But you just said we're voting on number eight. We don't know what number eight is. I can't read that.
It's all, it's been online since Friday. I mean, I assume that if you've come to the meeting, that you've, you're somewhat prepared to, like, with what you want to say. When we, when we get to the end of this meeting, which shouldn't take that long, you can comment on anything, not even stuff that's not on the agenda. So you can, you'll have a chance to do that then. So, we have.
Procedures?
Announcements. Well, the, the procedures for public notification are the same as they were last time, except this time, we've got procedures at the end of every section of the, of the agenda. What's my?
No, you're good.
You're up.
Agenda edit or none?
Oh, yeah, do we have any agenda edits? No. There is an executive session at the end of this meeting to discuss personnel. And the superintendent's report. Dr. Cooper.
Thank you, Madam President. Brief report this evening. Just an update as we started these, beginning of this 21-22 school year. Have spent time frequenting the buildings, visiting them. It's great to see all of our students back in person in our buildings together as we started this school year. This week is homecoming week. Many activities that were planned by our students, for our students, in our various district buildings, as well as athletic contests to celebrate this week. And another update is the executive summary report, which includes some academic data, will be shared with the curriculum and instructing committee, presented by the Office of Academic Affairs at our September 27th meeting, committee meeting, with that report to the full board during the committee of the whole on October 11th following that. That concludes my report this evening.
Okay. Finance. I don't know if, I know this, the vans for athletics were discussed in recent, in the recent past at the facilities meeting, or may have been athletics, but.
Facilities meeting, recent past, today.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and that's so they get.
Okay, all right. So essentially, we're getting ourselves on the waiting list?
Yeah, it's six months at the earliest, or something for that to get more.
Yeah, getting a, getting.
Hopefully the vans. Turtlenecks might get to the end of the year.
Not going with. All right. Any comments, questions, concerns for the, for the administration on that? Any public comment on finance? Programs? Lot of trips for next year, actually, it's all trips for next year. Any comments, questions, concerns about any of those?
Close over lights, I speak up for Dave. An absence of Dave in.
Mm-hmm.
There's no overlays over in Boyer Town, is there?
Oh, I don't know where, I don't know where the.
I just remembered him every time we did this.
Yeah, he didn't like us going to Boyer Town.
They have not named a location yet for PMA's.
We've, we've spent a lot of money on a lot of extra things because of COVID, but, but class trips weren't one of them. So, we haven't spent a lot of money on class trips in the recent past, so. Any other, yeah, but yes, the ghost of Dave Rathgab will be happy that you, that you mentioned that. So, any, any other comments, questions about any of those under programs for the administrators? Any public comments on programs? Personnel. Got no leaves, but we have retirements, resignations, and appointments. Any comments, questions, concerns for the administration on those? I didn't hear what you said.
Minister someone?
I'm sorry.
Fish tanks?
Oh, no, that was, that was before. Yep. 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 And any public comment on personnel? Moving on to secretary's correspondence, Mr. Scott?
As of right now, we've had a few comments on, obviously, what we just voted on. But other than that, there's, there's no other.
Right.
Booted on the health and safety plan.
The health and safety.
What was the details on that? Couldn't see it on the board.
Basic changes where, follow the mandate from the government.
We had a few people who had written in and said, said that they, for us not to follow the governor in the board of health. Try for me.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, since the beginning of the school year, I'd say we, we've received emails from, I'd say, less than 30 unique parents. We've received multiples from certain parents, but, but, but we have, it's been about 30, 30 unique individuals. So.
That's all I have.
Yeah. And Burke County Intermediates?
Yes, there was a meeting, attended virtually on August 19th. Lot of the programs approved and changed, ratified, probably, they say, Condivisor had a new member seated that has replacements. Had a number of children's programs approved for, to attend home months. Support of poverty programs. For Danilo, there were some programs ratified. They ratified the BCI Title I services for us, and also the, for our. Also ratified the Title II and Title IV services for eligible students. Again, August is a long meeting, because there is a July meeting. Lot of people things approved. A head start, again, approved. They approved their health and safety plan.
Okay. Any comments for, or questions for Mr. Miller? BCT, the BCTC Board, Ms. Thompson?
Ah, well, we have a back to class.
Can you speak up a little bit?
We also altered their health and safety plan. Well, neither one of them has, anyway, but there's also a point.
Okay. Okay, Student Board Representative Report. We have Mr. Luke Geringer, Ger, or Ger? Okay, Geringer, who's back with us since last year. And our new representative for junior class is Ms. Samseppo. And who's gonna go first?
I'll go.
If the light's on, yeah, you're good.
Okay. The primary center for academics, for students are in the process of completing their reading and math, being a dear benchmark assessment. Extracurricular, some teachers are taught all the students about the school rules of being peaceful, aware, wise, and safe. Cultural school is celebrating spirit days, one for the high school, as well as implementing extra spirit days and alphabet colors to help keep students in the garden. For the intermediate center, academic students are adjusting to new schedules for the school year. Extracurricular, students and staff are looking at planning many activities for the school year. And cultural, the highest we want to promote student activities to pursue development.
I look through the middle school test report.
Okay.
On the academic side, they're getting organized groups for, for laser learning time. As of time, our students are getting academic help in areas of need. Extracurricular, all sports seasons open this week, events are scheduled for every day of the season. Cultural, they are celebrating homecoming, with daily spirit meeting activities. Are also adjusting to new schedule for this year. Students in the age of 12 and 13. Extracurricular, sports and clubs are back, people are working together to boost membership. Cultural, homecoming activities take off this week with our participation. Thank you.
Thank you both, and welcome back. Any comments, questions for our student reps? Moving on to legislative, Mr. Strobel?
Yes, we are on a meeting tomorrow.
Oh, okay. When was the last time you met? When was the last time you guys met?
I think it was, I think it was April.
Oh, wow, okay. Okay, any, any other board reports? Okay. Public comment on any of those reports? Enrollment statistics are there. Any comments, questions for the administration on enrollment? Any public comments? Curriculum and instruction, Ms. Albright, do you want Mr. McKnight to give the, the summary of last, last month's meeting? Or do you want to do it?
No, Mr. McKnight can, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
So the last one's meeting will be postponed to this one, but I think the big part that we want to be moving towards is the executive summary coming up of academic affairs, taking a finer look back in where we are, not only have we dedicated social motion data, then also the impact of pandemic. We, in the next regular meeting, we.
Okay. And the next meeting is two weeks? Okay.
Twenty-seven.
Okay, thank you. Any, any board comments slash concerns? Any public comments on curriculum? Extracurricular, Mr. Miller?
Yes, we met earlier today, really, the highlights were we, whatever fall participation. It seemed to be on par with where we were two years ago. There's some concerns about a couple of sports that are lower than expected, the participation. Trying to get encourage to get others to come out, especially in middle school. Had an update on the vans, which we've talked about for all year, the vans with the used cars shortages, so there are nothing that's available. We're putting in an order, and it won't be filled for at least six months, my understanding. So we're gonna make these vans last, as honestly. Talked about unified sports, we've been approved for baccio ball, for the unified sports program. We're kind of participating in the winter. The only cost for that, and we will get funded through special businesses programs, is the only cost is transportation for our students. We've also selected to host a special Olympic fall event. It's still our secondary program, we've selected it to host, that's it, achievements. And I guess the last item is we're going to sell old uniforms. I think we've been historically here, as we have them, it's gonna be kind of, you know, hey, sale for, you know, a little bit of a fundraiser, but just to clean out old uniforms as well.
Okay. Any, any questions for Mr. Miller? Any public comment on extracurricular? Facilities and transportation, I know that was, there was a lot to cover there. Mr. Strobel?
Still needs to say?
Yes.
Obviously paying attention, aren't we?
That's all right.
I got the. Well, it's a pretty active meeting tonight, it's a pretty active meeting, like, a lot of information going back and forth. One that I would point out, though, that the people who are paying the SEC is really a great job, it's a great department, and all of them are really making this, everybody's doing really, really well. One thing that sticks out is that there was 1,900 workers, and there was only 46 open. Everyone can go back, you know, three years, four years to BCA, I was in those meetings, and it was like, Aaron showed up, a spreadsheet, and that was three days long, so that's created the average response to two days, which is pretty good, so I consider it, there's some large projects in there. There is some things coming up that we're gonna have to consider doing. One of them is there's a contract that's expired, 6/30/21, and two contracts are our service agreements for maintenance and, and sure, of the manuaries to hold them, and then what it basically pays for, instead of, it's a warrant, it's not a parts warrant, it's more of a labor warrant. That was, I want, we're gonna recommend that we approve this next, I believe, 22,000, 20,000, 40,000, 800,000, 700,000 contract, paying for three years, it's much cheaper than paying the annual, so. The other one is for a contract for the controllers, all controllers, same thing, but that was 28,571. Again, covering all the labor, social market. There was discussion regarding a contract extension for the ground, still looking for discussion, there was no recommendation from, from the committee. Conversation about the library, pipe's bursting, all the damage that's been done over there, it's quite extensive. What they're planning to fix that. And another recommendation from the committee, the IC roof has had issues, and so they got a way to, instead of paying tighter for roof one, to strip off. Top part of it, recode it, extend the warrant, 11,000 or a fraction of the cost, even though the cost is very expensive. It's 173,540 dollars, 48 dollars, but that's gonna be another recommendation. Anthony's a little bit, they were almost, it was exchanged with us, so that's what happened to the committee.
Strobel, it'd be tight down, can you estimate this, how much damage was actually done?
I know, it happened, it's a sense of, if you see the programs that are considering.
He was estimating low six figures with damage, but he did not, he, but it's not, the estimate is not complete, but he, but he's, he said low six figures, but six figures.
So what happened?
It's enough. Any comments, questions, other than Mr. Miller's, for, to Mr. Strobel? Any public comment? Policy. Mr. Scott?
Finance.
Oh, finance. Finance is next. Thank you.
And I was unable to tap.
Mr. Miller? Oh, yeah. That's right. Yes, and I, and there wasn't a lot, correct? There wasn't a lot at the last meet, the last finance meeting, correct?
Yeah, we just, you know, we, if you can get over, if I get highlights, you want the actual calendar? I projected for actually, we're figuring out, depending on the, depending on the moment, because I'm gonna have more of a.
Right. I'm pulling, I'm pulling it up right now.
I did send the words on to, I don't know, I just wanted to get an idea.
Right, but there is, there was a, there was a PowerPoint that was displayed where she explained where we were with the base index for the year. Keystone taxes, what was? I forget what that was, was, was that where, we were with collections, or?
Where we were with collections, and how well it's going, which seems to be going very well.
It seems to be going just as well as it did with the previous. Okay.
So you sent it now for presentation?
The presentation for everything that was set due.
Yeah, I can find it before the end of the meeting. Are you okay? Okay. And there is a lot of schedule for either one. But that's standard. Oh, payroll update.
Oh, we're all the way, we're gonna be going to payroll, they're doing systems. We're not doing that bad at all. There's been a few glitches, nothing, nothing extreme, nothing terrible, we're doing it the right way. The company keeps these, I, I really lost the fact that I really have, you weren't on the back end. It sure is even a minority card before it took all the while, unless it's playing very well.
Okay. Any, I will, if, if you can't, if you can't find it, I'll send, I'll send you.
It was just a way, the timeline, like, we did, and started the bucket community.
Right.
Like, when we did the bucket workshops, I heard that slide, so if you go this way, we're able to go this way, we're able to.
Right.
Kind of gave you an idea of what the actual, our base complicator is never gonna be as far in the index, we exempt the depth and everything. Which is gonna leave us a little bit higher, 1% than we did last year. I think they were saying 4.2 more than, we're at like 4% this year.
Yes.
Going to actually be able to go over time. And that's without any, only any of the exception or anything like that, so. My recommendation was for us to be able to be more direct, I suppose, to. Stay associated there and forward.
I just sent it to you. Just so it'll pop up on the top. All right. Any comments, concerns, questions for Mr. Miller? Or for Ms. Haynes? Any public comment on finance? Now we're moving on to policy, sorry about that.
Oh, no problem. Just real quick, we have a short meeting this, this evening. It just involved first readings of four different policies, from policy 006, 830, 902, and 904. The topics, just attendance via electronic communications, breach of computerized personnel information, application program, and attendance at school events. So that basically, which is our first reading, so we'll be discussing that at the next meeting. Our next policy review committee meeting will be held on October 11th. Thank you.
All right. Any comments, questions, concerns for Mr. Hurley or Mr. Scott? Any public comment on policies? Moving on to technology, Mr. Strobel?
Yeah, we had a meeting on the 23rd, and just kind of, all the night periods, we play over 200. I passed a, a line, there were problems. There was, the internet service, there's two systems now running, we have it running backup, that's all been completed. Frontline, very tired, lots of cooling out, work, and everything's in the line now, probably, as deep as ever. Infinite campus, campus, there's some new items, digital back to school for parents, they had. The activities and registration fees, maybe later this year, and absolutes, they'll be able to submit to the board as well. Infrastructure, there's a bunch of structural replacements, and in fact, our system has changed. And our code system is nearing end of use, so there's, you know, we have a validate system. Blackboard was installed, completely installed, natural straining, and code position, you know, collaboration, get more type, outside information, outside of the whole walls, so just plenty of, some side walls.
Any comments, questions, concerns for Mr. Strobel? Any public comment on technology? Okay, homestretch, old business, approving minutes, any, any concerns on those? The minutes from last meeting? Any public comment? New business, we got the meeting scheduled for next year. Two meetings, two meetings a month, except for, except for, yeah, July, thank you. Where there's only one. I looked at the dates, didn't seem to coincide with any, like, major holidays that anybody could complain about, so. Any concerns about the, the schedule for next year, for our meetings? Any public comment? All right. So, before I give, give, open the floor for, for comments from the public, I, I do want to apologize. I have been, when, with, you know, ever since the, the pandemic started, we've had a lot of new people at the meetings. I usually really try hard to walk everybody through what the process is like at the beginning, and I'll, you know, I'll say right out, I wasn't as good about that today. There, any, anything that we voted on can always be re-voted on, if anything that you bring up, like, changes the minds of anybody up here, so, you know, so I don't want you to think that we didn't want to hear your opinion. I was really surprised when nobody stood up, but I understand now why that happened, so I just want to apologize to y'all. So, now, if you want to come up and talk to us, now it's time for public comment. Come on up. Oh, thank you. Thank you. And it is on, but you're gonna, you're gonna have to get kind of close to it, sorry.
My name is Jim McGregory, I'm one of the 30 people that have been emailing you. I live at 112 Slayton, I'm in Douglasville. Over the last 18 months, we've been following the dictates and the leadership of this country to fight this COVID-19 pandemic. The orders from these leaders have often been contradictory and always confusing. We were the first told not to wear masks, when we were told we had to wear masks publicly, and socially distance six feet apart to flatten the curve and stop the spread. Then we were told we were not to leave our homes to flatten the curve and stop the spread. Our children were locked in the house, not allowed to attend school, not to play with their friends, not to play sports, and basically hide in fear of their lives. During this time, my children, along with many others, became reclusive and compressed. They learned next to nothing at home in the last three months of the 2019-2020 school year, and there was no comparison to this in every one family. That's some of my children were barely allowed to leave our property, and when they did, they had to wear masks to prevent them from spreading a disease they did not have. The 2020-2021 school year brought more uncertainty with frequent school closures, remote learning, split schedule, and more. The children still rarely got to see their friends or interact. When they did, they had to sit with plastic shields and face masks if they were going to the mall. We have never had this response to the flu before, or any of the other SARS, COVID variants that have come along over the years. Is this gonna be the new normal anytime the flu comes to town? Due to all this uncertainty, difficulty learning, normal childhood stresses, and fear driven into them, they were at the 18 months of their childhood, our quality education, and their friends. The mental effects of this are not known yet, however, I'm sure they will be felt for years to come, if not for the rest of their lives. We, as parents, went along with all this to prevent the spread of this disease. We are now embarking on the next phase of this seemingly never-ending journey with the Delta and new variants. When is this gonna end? I have a lot more, but I have to adjust it down to three minutes. If we look at the facts, a properly fitted N95 mask with stop particulates down to 23 microns, and the COVID virus is 0.125 microns. This is like trying to stop a fly with a chain made of fence. What protection does normal, everyday fabric provide? If I buy a cheap bandana at the dollar store, or have someone sew up a mask with fabric they have in their house, who adds supplies as protective masks? What actual protection does that provide? Where have these been tested for their efficacy? Where the, where are the peer-reviewed scientific tests for these masks, or the mask policies in general, to prove that they work? We are taking the word of the CDC, which is constantly changing, based on no actual tests. The statistics that are coming out of the CDC are constantly changing, along with their recommendations, yet we continue to follow their decisions, even though they have constantly contradicted themselves. But basically, what I'm gonna say is, our kids have been through enough, they're having enough trouble. I was at the Paddle Puff game over the weekend. It was the first time I actually saw my kids really enjoying a school event in years, probably, almost two years now. They had fun, they looked normal, the kids all looked normal, they looked like. They had fun, they looked normal, the kids all looked normal, they looked like they were having fun. Don't take that away from them, this is their childhood, this is the only chance they get to be kids. Don't take that away. If we start masking our kids, then the next thing we're going to do is, we're going to mandate vaccines, and we're going to mandate, and the next thing, and then the next thing. And then when does that stop? We have to sustain, it's not working, this is just, it isn't working. We have to figure out a new way to fix this problem, aside from these constant lockdowns, masks, vaccines, all some stuff, and, and get back to a normal life. Thank you.
Thank you.
I need to say, sure, I have a little bit of stuff. Um, and so last week, I got a letter, that's, that's your complex, I'm asking, and, and really, it's time, I just have a few questions, because I, I, while I, I work a reception for my daughter, and day one, so remind me, she came without a mask, and had a letter, so again, we'll be extra for it. Your teacher asked, so she said, um, at reception, who's her thing? Oh, yeah, I got it. Next day, she said, and, um, Mr. Silverman said, you mean the last time, and she said, she said, that's, you know, bustle. And I said, do you have a letter? And he was like, he responded, yes, as well as the, but did you realize that there, that Daniel Green has his own exemption letter? Did you guys realize that?
No.
No.
So that was not being available, is not online. Um, I looked, it was more online. I need my own, like, what I get, it's like another school district's, um, exemption form.
From Valley.
Well, it's in the form, um, I should, another schools, I presented, and I signed it, and they came back, said, we need a doctor's name.
Yep.
So I called, take that, to see if that's true. That's not true. So, I was informed, by the children, that, of course, the Department of Health mandated super seats are the policy that you guys voted on last, huh? Okay, I understand that. Then why does the school get to supersede the Department of Health? Is, my daughter was told she kind of would ask, and once I got the Daniel Green form, which also requires, um, a doctor's signature, which is not necessary, and for me to sign off, it says if I am willing to, um, get the, you know, if they have to sign off by the doctor, and I also have to sign away from medical rights, it says, this says, actually, I want a copy, for you guys to see, because I'm not sure if you're aware that this exists. Are you, did you know? Yeah, see, you should have approved it, right? An exemption now? Should we still worry about that?
Mm-mm.
Can I say? Okay, here's, I want to read everything.
Where is it on the website?
This is my complete violation of my rights.
They have, when they request, the parent gets it, and the principal gets it.
I verify all rise in any area of school insurance, releasing my child's education, health records, and information to and from the medical provider, including certification. I understand that the terms of this authorization are governed by the health insurance, this is above. Um, I understand that I have a right to revoke this authorization anytime prior to the Dancomary School District's compliance, or request that fourth year in, provided that the reputation is in writing. I further understand that additional information relating to the exemptions, the right to revoke a description of how I may revoke this authorization, is set forth in the Dancomary School District's notes, uh, practice, blah, blah, blah. But here's the part, I understand that the information used or disclosed pursuant to this authorization may subject or re-exposure by the recipe listed above, and in that case, will no longer be protected by GIBA. Now come on. I just, it's, 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 it seems to make a connection, I wrote, and it says, um, I don't, I understand that I'm not required to sign this authorization, and that the Dancomary School District may not condition treatment on my execution of this authorization. So basically, if I sign it, then they're not going to grant the exemption, but I'm the parent. So, that's I thought of that. I also can ask a question?
Yeah, um, you can go ahead and ask the question, and then, yeah.
Okay, so, um, quarantine contact tracing, if the kids are masked, will they need contact trace?
Depends.
So that doesn't change anything?
Oh, yeah.
So, um, and then I just wanted to, because I do want her to have this exemption, because she has issues that do not require doctors, so just my, you know, it should be fine, according to the mandate. Um, the other part is, um, I wanted to tell you this.
How many, how many more questions we have? I mean.
One.
Okay, one?
I, I, this is the contact, uh, okay, if a child, do you realize that if a child is vaccinated, and they're contact traced, they have to go back to class?
It's still spreading.
Did you know that?
Mm-hmm, with a mask on.
You understand that they can still catch it and give it, but they're allowed to go back to class? Why is everybody okay with that?
The level is different. It's something that's vaccinated.
They're tired.
They don't have to.
Okay, I agree with you.
Okay, is that?
No, my time is up.
Okay.
But, excuse me, but you, you did answer her question.
You are correct. I'm waiting until everybody's done, and then we will have, we, I, I, I wouldn't like to get out of here tonight, so we're going to talk about everything at the same, at the end.
I think before someone else comments, you should answer the question.
I think.
Don't, don't need to answer.
I think this is, this is our meeting, and I'm going to.
We think it's out here. Out here.
It's, are you telling, are you telling me that there's no more comments to be made right now? Are you done?
A lot more comments.
All right.
Question, and then we'll run. You guys are. Before my time starts, I think Mrs. Fisher deserves an answer to that question.
I agree.
Did this part approve that assumption policy?
I agree. These answers reflect what she asked, because there's other parents sitting here that would like to know the answers to the questions that she asked. I can come up and ask the same questions.
You could.
But if you answer them now, I won't have to.
Right.
But isn't it our normal practice to, our normal practice of meetings to don't answer questions?
Correct.
That, that, it isn't the normal practice for us to answer questions as we go along.
It's a public comment.
But I think it answers the question, doesn't it?
I mean, this is, this is.
You're afraid to answer.
No, no, not. I, I just told you, I'm, I told you the way I was going to run the meeting, and I don't want to be dictated to how I'm going to run the meeting.
We don't want to dictate to his parents. There you go.
Are you? Are we saying that we're done?
No.
Okay, then go ahead, just go ahead, go ahead and.
Next public comment.
Public comment.
Okay. Here we go.
Hello, my name is Nicole Sherman, I live at one thirty-one, East Friday Drive, Williamsburg. I am not here to, to, to go against the governor, or anything like that. I would like to know a clear, concise, um, explanation on the exemptions, because the exemptions are very gray. Um, so I have three children, one at the middle school, two at the high, two at the middle school, one at the high school, and I would, I don't feel it's anybody's business why I would like the exemption. Two of them are medical, two of them are medical exemptions, and if I really need to go to the doctor, I will, and I'll get a signature. But I don't feel like that's anybody's business, why their medical history, and why last year two of them suffered with a mask, is up for discussion. I just feel like, um, I should be able to write a letter stating that I have reason for my children to not wear them, two of them are medical, one of them is not. Um, so I actually had the same question as Mrs. Fisher, and I would like to know, so I pulled my students, I pulled my children on that Monday, they're learning virtually, that's what I have to do, I feel helpless. I don't want them to be home learning all over again, I'm also an educator, but if you're not going to grant me an exemption for personal reasons of my family, and personal health reasons of my children, what else am I going to do? So I don't want them home learning, because I feel like they need to be in school, but my hands are tied over this exemption. So the exemption letters from the, from the website, from the district's website, are printed, filled out, signed, and I'm waiting for three doctor's appointments, but I feel like that's a little extreme. I would very much appreciate answers by the end of this meeting, so that I know where what I need to do to move forward for the best education for my children. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi.
Hi.
Yeah, you bet.
Is this my name search?
Okay.
So you have it?
Okay.
Thanks.
My name is Valerie Reckman, I'm from the Evans Township. I have a copy of the mandate, which I provided to you, if you would mind, please refer to section three. Section three, it says, exceptions to covering requirement, it doesn't say exemptions. Exception and exemption are two of the core feeling. Section B, it says, if wearing a face covering would either cause a medical condition, or exacerbate an existing one, including respiratory issues that impede breathing, a mental health condition, or disability, you are the exception. Refer, meant to section five, to four. It says, the school entity obligations provide reasonable accommodations for individuals who state they have, who state they have a medical condition, mental health condition, or disability that makes it unreasonable for the person to maintain a face covering. Section five A, it talks about a school entity should not enforce face covering requirements where there's an exception under section three, or if it's unsafe to do so. Under no circumstance does this mandate acquire medical records. There are three cases right now being filed through the state, one hearing on the eighteenth of September with regards to this mandate, it is unconstitutional, and the school board operates separately and sovereignly, independent of the actual mandate, so legally, the school can make the best decisions for their school district under the law, under P A law. You may or may not disagree, and that's fine, but I think we need to really honor the actual mandate, if we're going to say we need medical records. Now, I, I actually work with contracts daily for the authorization, you actually can cross it out initially and say, I revoke it, and you are not required to sign or release any medical records to the school district, and it was even confirmed by one of the principals. I also want to confirm that the aerosol spray from the actual mask, as confirmed by the gentleman, the actual spores for the mask is anywhere between three to six microns, the size of the virus is point one two five, that is backed up. Last meeting, we were accused of not providing factual information, so now we have facts. Now we have, and we're going to talk about science, because right now, we have the god of science, right? The head chief of the World Health Organization is actually on trial for death penalty, because she refused ivermectin to Indian state. She's on trial for death penalty, because she refused to release therapeutics. Right now, this is a dog and pony show, and our kids are the victim of it. If you're following somebody, follow it. You can even have a solicitor review it, this from the bar in A B I. Unmask our kids.
I'm here.
Yep, thank you.
My name is Bob Markle, seven, seven, seventh street, First Road, Pennsylvania. Obviously, to discuss the mask mandate, if there are anybody else here, that's maybe the Department of Health has not included the mask mandate because pressure, because of any scientific reason, but because of pressure from the teachers union. So there's no science-based reason for them to, to oppose this, it's just based on, what the teacher union want? Teacher union also want the schools to close on Tuesday, so the schools will close on Tuesday. That is the reason why things happen, because of the unions, or because of bureaucrats, not because of real science, not the follow the science, or the gaps that is always pushed around. Masks don't work, uh, they have not worked since the start of the pandemic, it's not anything, as, as you can see, when everybody's masked up almost a hundred percent of the time, in the, and then it's still raging on, month after month after month. Uh, the reason why it doesn't work is based on, you know, the, the size of the particulates, but also, uh, there, there's not one study that shows that the mask actually slowed the spread of COVID at all. Children are at lower risk of COVID than the flu, so all the, all the people we are putting masks on for six, seven hours a day are not at risk of COVID. They're more at risk of the flu, regular yearly flu, and they're, and adults of any age group that are vaccinated are also far more at risk of COVID than these children unvaccinated, because they have a different immune system than we have as a bunch of old people. Children wearing masks increase level carbon dioxide from a range of four hundred, two hundred parts per million, two values average from thirteen thousand per million, whose highest twenty-five thousand parts per million. Uh, OSHA has five thousand heart component has acceptable limit. Children covered in face masks will keep communication and learning. Uh, children wearing masks all day, physically and psychologically. Uh, I, I personally have a, my youngest child, he comes home having issues reading, and he's never had asthma or anything like that, but wearing a mask all night, reading in his own carbon, carbon dioxide all day, has an effect on our children. This needs to sign. Thank you.
Did you, you already had, so, oh, yeah, you, you went second, sorry.
My name is Kevin Buckbor, I live in Evans Township. Uh, my daughter actually has a question for the board, she's down on the soccer field right now, she could be here tonight. She'd like to know from the board what the difference is between sitting in lunch, shoulder to shoulder without a mask on, and sitting in a classroom at the desk masked up. I think, uh, the students deserve an answer, because she describes school as a prison right now. Are we running a prison? She said they go out to recess, the whistles blow, they have to line up like a prison camp, and they walk around the track for gym. So I think our students really deserve an answer, between the difference of wearing a mask in a classroom and being able to sit at lunch, shoulder to shoulder. Couple other questions I have is, back in August, is somebody writing these questions down, so you can go answer them later on?
It's been recorded.
Okay, thank you. Uh, back in August, who originally, uh, recommended to the administration to mandate masks? Before the last meeting? Also, how many flu cases, well, COVID, COVID's a clue, how many cases have, the school district has, have had since beginning of school? Uh, of the board members, who supports and agrees with Governor Wolf? Is Pennsylvania under a current state of emergency due to COVID nineteen or the flu?
Ask that question again.
Is Pennsylvania currently under a state of emergency due to COVID nineteen? And also, if anyone remembers about a year ago, on September twenty-ninth, our dictator Wolf, and state presenter, state representative Wendy Oldman, were caught on a hot light, commenting about masks as being political theater? I look forward to your answers, thank you.
Me too.
Anybody else? Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to go.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I would go like my shirt. Last time I was here, someone said not to make this politically. This is 150,000% politically. When we had politicians like our corrupt, tyrannical governor Tom Wolf determining whether or not our children can breathe air freely. After we start off the year with parents deciding whether our children should or should not wear masks, then all of a sudden, Wolf goes on air and says that he mandates that all children K to 12 should be masked in schools. And what does the school do? They follow a sheet. This is completely ridiculous. A mandate is not law. We don't have to comply with any mandates. Last time I checked, this was America. Who does he, Tom Wolf, and why are we complying to his timing? I know for a fact that we, the people, voted that our governor would lose his power because of how he handled COVID last year. I don't know if everyone knows these politicians are slowly taking our freedoms. See, if we bow down and comply to what they tell us to do, what they don't understand, and you should all understand, is that we, the people, aren't going to keep tolerating this anymore. You all get voted in by we, the people, and we, the people, can vote you out of office. I noticed that most of your school board meetings are usually empty. Most people don't care where you're going to spend and allocate the money from the school district. However, when you're determining how you teach our children and what you're going to make our children do, parents will come in drones. I noticed the last board meeting, when we were here discussing masks, we had three security guards here, and the place was filled with more people than I've ever seen at a meeting before. I wonder why? Oh, I know, because we all want the right to decide if we want our children to wear masks or not. It's our choice, not yours, and certainly not the governor of Pennsylvania. This is only going to get worse. I know the last time we were here, someone said there would be more of hurt people here, but they were afraid to come out and voice their opinion because of what the other side will say to them, politically. Because this government wants people fighting with each other, race against race, religion versus religion, male versus female, Democrat versus Republican, masked versus unmasked, and now unmasked mandate versus vaccinated. The unmasked don't care if you choose to wear a mask. Just like we're choosing not to wear one. I ask that everyone stop watching the fake news, social media, and all propaganda, the janitorial foods, the debt lines. Do your research. I mean, some of you board members have to be educators. One more thing, this is what I experienced firsthand. I went to the doctors for a routine checkup. I wore a shield. How does this protect more than a mask that so-called protects you from this virus? It doesn't, but that's okay, right? Again, as long as I comply, right? I was bashing COVID and drilling her with questions, hurdles she could not answer. She was back and forth, and her response to me was to read about it on the CDC website. The funny thing was that after we were going back and forth, as I was asking her about masks versus shields, socialism distancing, she said to me, "You know what? There haven't been any flu-related cases at all this year in our office. Ask yourself why. Where we go on, we go on."
Hi, my name is J.C. Ward. Thank you, and I am in Amity Township.
You have street address?
I'm sorry, what?
Street, you don't have to give the number, just the street name.
Or else do. I do need to.
They should be, yeah.
Okay, I'm on Kingston Drive.
Okay, thanks.
Anyway, I also want to question the logic, because I have younger kids that love the socialization, being around their peers. Why do they have to sit at a desk to socially distance with a mask on? But they can go to lunch, and they can go to recess, and have fun, and play together, eat together, share their breakfast with food and everything. I don't know, where is the logic behind that? Because I'm flabbergasted, where's literally the logic behind it? You can eat lunch together, you can play together, but in your classroom, you have to sit far apart, that's your shield and mask, this is your mask. Where is the logic behind that? Oh, and sports too. We can all play sports and not wear masks, sweat, spit, coughing, sneezing. That's fine, right? Where is the logic? Where's the common sense? That's what I don't understand. And I'm worried now that this whole thing with lunch and the discrepancies about children playing together and having lunch together, which is the highlight of their day, you guys are taking away from it. And I hope you don't. And I also want to ask, I'm also fearful that we're going to be here next year playing against mandated vaccination. And it doesn't affect kids. Look at the statistics from the CDC that everyone put on this high horse. Look at the statistics I wrote to you last meeting. Listen to me again. More kids have died in the flu in a six-month period than more children died in an 18-month period of COVID. I'm sorry, I'm very passionate, but I'm now looking at private schools. Thank you for going back to masks, because now I'm calling private schools. I've been thinking about it, but now that you guys are masking up and taking the authority over what happens to my kids, they're going to be pulled out. So thank you.
About paying school taxes too.
I also would like to know when you're going to give those answers to us about all these questions we had up here.
Yeah.
Tonight?
Yeah.
Okay.
As many as I can.
Thank you, and I appreciate your time, but I really hope you consider it will make the real statistics. And another thing I want to point out, so I ask my boys every day, "What was the last day of school today?" And you know what they said in the first week of school? Most kids still have masks on when they have the choice. Except for when they are at their desk, socially distanced by themselves, that they felt they would take it off. More kids in their classrooms had masks on because they wanted to do it, they chose to. Now they're being forced to. Give these kids a chance, maybe make the right decision sooner or later. Thank you.
That's okay, would you be able to like just get a little closer to the mic? I'm sorry.
I don't have anything for me to prepare.
That's fine.
I need to come up and speak every time I'm here, because apparently we're keeping track of how many people speak. I haven't emailed everybody multiple times, but I can do that. I can email all of you, every view, telling my views. I don't think the masks do anything, and so I'm wearing a mask because I feel like people want me to wear a mask because it makes everyone feel better. So I've got masks on. Just something that concerned me just as the school started is that, I agree that I think, you know, obviously, if a child doesn't feel well, they should stay at home. And on the boy's soccer team, somebody tested positive for COVID. I was told the child had no symptoms, but because he had a positive test, he was asked by the school nurse to list everybody he had been in close contact with. And so, a list of names got presented to the school nurse, and my son's name was on it. So then my son was asked if he was vaccinated or not, which I don't think is anyone's business. And when he told the nurse no, which was entirely his choice, I left it up to him since he's 15. And then he was told he had to quarantine, and he got this whole official paper about when he could test, and when he could go back without a test. Then he had to do virtual school for a couple days, and he had to miss soccer practice. But his fellow friends and players who were vaccinated or told the nurse that they were vaccinated did not have to quarantine, and were sent back to class. And we all know that we can still, this vaccine is not a true vaccine because the CDC changed the definition of a real vaccine. So you can still get COVID and be vaccinated and pass it on and whatever about the viral load, but you can still get it from other people. So I don't understand, I'd really like to know, why is the policy different that we're quarantining unvaccinated children and we're not quarantining vaccinated children? So I'd really like to know the answer to that. I know I read recently that several universities like Lehigh and Duke that had mandatory, every student who went back had to be vaccinated, and that they've had multiple cases. And if they're all wearing masks all the time and they're all vaccinated, how would they get in cases? So this just doesn't make any sense. Every year, we're going to be back here, and I don't know what the end goal is. We're just going to keep wearing masks because they think that'll feel good, but then we feel uncomfortable when we don't have them on because we feel unsafe. Or some percentage of the population feels unsafe, and it makes them feel better if we just all wear masks. So then we're going to force everyone to do that. And I don't know at what point, is it going to be next fall? Is it going to be the next fall? Like, how long are we going to keep wearing these masks for? It's never going to end.
I promise, I'll be very quick, I know I was already, but I just have to say that going on her comment, there are children, high school, middle school children, so mine are older, fighting each other because one's vaccinated and one isn't. So this goes along the lines of mental health problems?
Absolutely.
On very impressionable 12, 13, 14, 15-year-old kids. So I just have to say that.
Yep, no, I understand.
Because it sparked a sentiment in my brain. Because I'm, like I said, I'm an educator, so I'm a nosey mom too. So I know everything that goes on with everything, and I have heard of numerous times that in the schools, these kids are fighting with each other because, "Hey, are you vaccinated?" "Oh, well, you're not vaccinated, so you need to get away from me." Like, that's crazy. It's craziness, and we can only teach our children at home the best that we can. We can't control other people, but this is another complication. And I understand, like I said, I put my kids out because that would be the best thing for me and my children, but this is just another thing that has compounded. Mental health, let's not even go to physical health. Let's talk about mental health of these young, impressionable teenagers that are already, don't know what to think of the world.
Thank you, thank you for bringing that up.
Hey, you all folks, Mark, thank you, from Bubba's Hill, Cedar Run Drive. A couple people used some words that I felt were very appropriate and common sense, I believe. I was a big person when this thing first started with, back in March last year. I tracked the numbers, I followed what was happening. But then, as I, you know, I did a lot of math on the numbers, and I kind of figured out what was going on pretty quickly. I decided last year to keep my kids out of school because I liked going in and out, in and out. And we did full virtual. And this year, our kids were super excited because over the summer, they got their friends, they got to go outside, they got to enjoy their life because this thing was going away. It was disappearing in May and June, and, you know, sort of ran me back on again. And if you really look at what's going on with the narrative, as long as you're paying attention to the wrong sources, this is going to continue forever. This is never going to end, I'm telling you right now. And the help, the psychological damage it's causing for our kids, and I can cry right now, I can get super upset because I do believe that the psychological part of this for our kids is the worst of the worst, okay? It's not about the disease, okay? The kids themselves, they're not spreading it. They're hiding the facts from people, they're hiding the truth from people. You have to search for it, you have to dig deep. You have to call names and conspiracy theories just to get answers about this, okay? The psychological damage it's causing for our kids, I have a four-year-old, a six-year-old, and an eight-year-old, okay? And, you know, their first thing is like, "Why do I have to wear this mask?" And I don't, you don't want to tell them X, Y, or Z, because it's all confusing for all of us, okay? We, I do believe, we as the people are being attacked by our own government. People mention Tom Wolf, who's a perfect example. We're going to vote, what was it, eight to zero, on a mandate that was mandated by a tyrannical governor and disagree.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but if you take one more step backward, that's going to, this is going to unhook.
Disagree with you if you all want, and I don't know any of these, this is my first meeting here, I don't know any of these, but if we continue to go down this road, there's not going to be a return. Like somebody said, we're going to be back here next year talking about vaccines, and what does that mean for our kids? You know, we're talking about forcing people to take medicine? What about being healthy? What about going out to study? They don't want you to do any of that stuff. They just want you to follow what you're told, do what you're told. But then if you do what you're told, do something else, do something more, take the next step. This is never going to end, and the mask is only the beginning of it. Again, who's testing anybody's mask? Everyone has a different mask here. No one's wearing a gas mask or an M95. I've seen plenty of information, but M95 is not even blocking paint, let alone the virus. So, you know, this is our kids, these are our kids, okay? And we're mostly going to pay taxes towards the schools, or taxes towards the state, taxes towards the government, where how that money's being appropriated is not even, doesn't even matter. It's the psychological damage that this is causing for our kids. Like I said, I got a four-year-old, and I got to see the kid in a mask. And they interact through their facial expressions. They interact this way, okay? And I believe you're doing this because it's the easiest thing to do for everybody. This is the easiest thing for everybody to do, just to go along with it. But I do believe that we should be breaking free of this narrative. That's all I have, thank you.
I can't remember.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question for the board.
One.
As a taxpayer, can I make a motion that we revisit something in the agenda?
No.
Why not?
Because. Right. Yeah.
So we have to wait until the next meeting then?
Well, you, yeah, taxpayer, a member of the public can't make, can't make a motion, ever.
So how do we, then go?
Run for school board, run for school board. We ran, we were, we were here.
Were there something locked out from bringing a topic up, bringing it over?
Yes.
We didn't make the law.
There is no law. There's no law. There is no law. It is a mandate.
We're not talking about the mask.
I think you all are being misled, because I had a change issue.
This is like the second time that you come up, you asked your question, you asked your question, and I gave, and I gave you an answer.
I had two discussions.
I asked, you've asked your question. You've asked a question, and I gave you an answer.
Can I please have the floor? Peaceful protest.
Can you ask a question? Yes.
Can I please have the floor?
No, that, come on, don't be.
No, I'm serious.
What do you want to, what do you want to talk about peaceful protest?
I had two conversations this week. I had one conversation with the middle school principal, Mr. Towers. He then directed me to Mr. Supers, which is a shame he's not here tonight, because he himself called this mandate a law. I am not a legal person, I had to correct him twice that this is not a law. The board has the right not to follow this.
Okay, all right. And I've given you ample opportunity, please sit down.
As taxpayers and taxpayers, how do we go about bringing this up again?
Sir, please sit down.
Can you please answer my question?
Please sit down. No, I didn't listen to any of it because I kept saying, "Please sit down."
How, as taxpayers and parents, do we revisit this topic?
I am asking you to please sit down.
How do we revisit this? That's what we like to know.
Please sit down.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any comment?
I'm sorry.
No, there were two different people that got up twice. We normally don't allow that if your time has ran out the first time. I'm not going to allow it a third time, because I did ask those people not to do it. I let them speak. They went on, they said what they said and did what they did. The first person was very good about just asking one question and sitting down. I can't make exceptions. I can't make exceptions if no one's going to respect that you already were given three minutes of time.
My name is Caroline Craig. I live in Huntsville, St. Leon Road. My husband is the first gentleman to talk for tonight. I don't usually get up and.
Not the way it's going.
I don't usually get up and do these kind of things because I have anxiety issues, as do my kids. They had the masks for the last year and a half and I can't even tell you the emotional and physical damage that it's done to my kids. If you mess with my kids, you mess with me. Okay? My child, who's a senior this year, has gone 30 pounds because she wasn't home because of COVID. Her activity level went down the tube and her, started her self-esteem. Do you have any answers on how I fix that? Should I ask Governor Wolf? Maybe he'll have an answer for me. I'm pissed.
Okay. So, do you want to start with actually just having a discussion or do you want, you just go for?
I would like to.
What?
I would like to discuss certain things.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
I am very upset that the public is adversarial to us as board members in that I am a parent, I have three children in the district. They are 16, 13, and 6 years old. So they're in three of the four buildings. And I go to the lawn with the public last meeting and go to those for masks. And then Governor Wolf issued his mandate. And you're angry at all of us for a decision that, yes, to an extent, we were forced to make.
No, no, Mark, no.
Wait, I'm not done. We are in this as a volunteer because we care about our community and our children. And there was a article in the Red Eagle on September 9th that if we did not enforce Governor Wolf's mandate, that we were subject to personal liability, we would lose the protection of sovereign community and we could be individually sued. Now, I may or may not agree with you about the masks. Believe me, I've read most of the articles that you all have and the ones that you have sent me. But I am not willing to risk my family and face litigation, jail time, or fines for a volunteer position that I'm doing my very best at. So I'm sorry if you feel differently. I encourage you to run for school board and then you could make that decision. But I will not risk my family by voting against this and facing these things.
As to the, the different, someone mentioned that there are some lawsuits out there. Both, there are some based on whether or not there should be a requirement for masking statewide in schools at all. Um, there's another one having to do with medical, medical, um, excuse, exception. If there's a, if there's a requirement for a doctor's note. There, there are other school districts are, that are leading those charges and, and once those are decided, we'll have a clearer picture what the, the four corners of the, um, requirements that came out of the Department of Health are. For right now, we're left with the, with, with the requirements from the Department of Health as they stand. And we are requiring a medical excuse from a doctor. It is what our, our council has recommended we do. From what I've been told, 18, we have 18 school districts in Berks County. Two of them aren't requiring medical excuse. Everybody else is requiring a medical excuse. In the, in, I read an article about whether or not you need to have a medical excuse that was in a Central Pennsylvania paper where they had done an informal review of schools. That's, that, so obviously that's not exhaustive. But they called 50 school districts across the state and 13 of them weren't requiring medical excuse, but everybody else was. So it's what our council has told us we should do and so that is why we are doing it. I am sorry if it's onerous, but what, what you're asking for is an exception to what we're requiring everybody else to do. I might have some of these questions out of order. What's the difference between being in lunch and being in class? Um, there isn't much, but at the same time, you can't have somebody wear a mask in lunch. The only thing I will say is that in the classroom, you're in there for six hours with the same people. And at lunch, you're supposed to be eating lunch, half hour, 40 minutes, and then going back to your classroom. Last year, we required shields, but this year, there is no requirement from the state that we brought back the shield, so we didn't bring back the shields. I mean, if, if you want, if you want that, it to make more sense, we'll bring back the shields during lunch, you know? But, but right now, we didn't, we didn't bring them back because it's not required by the mandate. Which, yeah, okay, we can argue about the semantics of it, of whether or not it's a mandate or, or if it's, you know, an order from the Department of Health. But that's why we didn't bring back the shields. And the order exempts athletic activity. So that's why there's no requirement when you're outdoors or having athletics to be, to be masked. We, we had people masking in indoor, in, in the, in the stands in indoor events last year because that's what the requirements were per the governor's orders last year. We could bring that back again too and have everybody masked in the stands again, but that's not what's required by the order, so that's not why we didn't do it. I understand that it, that, that it doesn't always make linear sense. But, but we are trying to live within the bounds of the orders, the, the requirements that we're being given by the state. I don't think it's fair for any of y'all to ask how we all feel about, um, how, how we all feel, how we all feel about Governor Wolf's orders. But if you, if you're here and listen to the way we vote, except for today, you know, you probably got a good idea of how we feel when we have our discussions about these things. The reason today is different is because of what Ms. Bell said. You know, we all, um, don't know what our liability would be if we didn't follow the mask requirements.
He's a dictator.
He is.
And that is not for me to say when I'm sitting here. It's not. And, and, you know, everybody up here, including, including Dr. Cooper, took, took oaths to uphold the rules of the Commonwealth. And that's what we're doing. And I'm sorry that you don't like them. And I, I don't know, I don't know what else to say, you know? I mean, I, I gave y'all your chance to tell us how, how pissed you are at all of this because that's what we're doing and I'm, I, I would never, ever want to take that right away from you. And I'm not going to. It's just, um, as I've said before, it's not supposed to be, it's not supposed to be a question and answer period. Sometimes when there's small things that I know the answer to off the top of my head or Dr. Cooper knows the answer to off the top of his head, you know, we will answer people's questions right then and there. But, but that's not what this period, this is for. It's for you to vent your spleen at us, which I believe you've done. It's, you know, if you have direct questions, you can always, well, I was gonna say you can always email us. But right now, um, the number of emails, I've probably only answered directly like 10 emails of the, you know, close to 70 that I've received. I said that we received 30 unique emails. There were, there were several people that sent us more than one. And it's just because there's, there's just a lot. There isn't a state of emergency. I believe it was canceled on June 19th. So there hasn't been a state of emergency in the state since June 19th. Questions about how we do our contact tracing and who gets to, who gets to go back to class and who has to go home? Those are all spelled out by a very specific decision tree that's, that's been given to us by the Department of Ed or Health?
The Department of Health, they call it PA-HI, said PA-583 is what your nurses are calling it or obligated to call it.
I will tell you, if, if, if a nurse asks a student if you're vac, if you're vaccinated or not, if they're over 12, that student could have, could, yeah, I, that, that student could have said, I don't want to tell you. But if that's the case, if they don't want to tell you, then we're gonna have to apply the, we're gonna have to apply the, the level of quarantine of an unvaccinated person, which means that person has to go home. Which, which, you know, is fine. It's just that, that's what would happen. So we're not asking because we're trying to invade somebody's privacy. We're asking because we're trying to give you an opportunity to, um, maybe have like less, less of a, less of a quarantine time. That, that was, that, that would be the reason that, you know, somebody would be asked. I mean, is that, is that an incorrect statement?
No, it's true.
Um, so, you know, um, it's the same, it's the same with, uh, with staff. They don't have to, they don't have to tell us what their vaccination status is. But if they are exposed to somebody who is positive and they don't want to tell us what their vaccination status is, it's like, okay, well, you gotta go home for five days and then get a, and then get a test and not come back until you get a negative test. I, um, and you are all welcome to, to run for school board. Up until, up until Ju-June, now maybe May of 2020, we had three, we had three vacancies on the board and it had been, we'd, we'd had three vacancies on the board for six months. Because nobody wanted to do this and I, I don't know why. It's, it's a lot of fun. And, and, you know, it's, you know, I was, I was, I'm very grateful for the folks that stepped up to do the job. And I'm very grateful for anyone who runs because it's, 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 it's thankless and it's hard. And, and I don't mean it like, you know, there are rewards too, you know? Like when COVID's not happening, you get to shake people's hands when they graduate. That's pretty cool. Because it's a great day for the kids. Um, but, and I'm not, and I'm not saying it to say, you know, I feel thanklessness coming off of the group here. I don't mean it like that because I think that just the fact that you're here, speaking to us, to a, to a, um, a situation that you, that you believe strongly in, I think it's important. I was here in your shoes, um, for a long time. I was, I, I visit meetings that went well into the night. Where I had plenty to say and I had to be told to sit down because my three minutes were up. And, uh, you know, so I, I'm very, I'm very much an advocate for having people come here. I would love it if I didn't have to explain what the rules were every time because the people that came were here all the time. And, you know, learning about what we do and everything that we, everything we need to be, um, need to be keeping, keeping an eye on. Like, it has, it has, obviously, it's been, it's been COVID for two, a year and a half, for real.
Never to stop either.
But there's more to what we do. We, I mean, we talked, we talked about things that were non-COVID related today in this meeting and in the three meetings that preceded it. So I don't know if, um, did I miss any of the highlights of? Anything you wanted to add?
No, you said it.
I went on for way too long. That's, that's fine. Um, anybody have?
Who, who did advise the board or the administration?
Oh, that's right.
In August or whenever it was.
When, um, when we had, when we had, we had a, we had a meeting, I guess, in July. And, um, we were, we, the board overall, I think, felt comfortable with leaving things the way they were. Right? And, um, but the numbers, the number, so there, there were several things that happened toward August that, um, there were several tools that helped us determine how many cases there are, not just in the county, but in our school district, um, that were not available over the summer that became available at the end of August. And they were showing some pretty significant numbers of, of cases in our area. It did not show whether or not those cases were, um, student age or older. But, um, there was an article in the paper that, that actually showed that, um, Amity Township had the highest per capita cases in the second week of August. And those, you know, just be told, oh, our, one of our, one of our townships has the highest in the county. You know, that was a little bit concerning. And so we, um, we decided to look at maybe doing masking just for the unvaccinated ages of 12 and under. And, and we voted no on that, as, as, as Ms. Bell said. I voted, I voted yes. That was the administration's recommendation and I voted yes. But that's, you know, it's not about winning, you know? It's, it's about, like, we had a vote and it was a very tough vote and then we moved forward as a group to do our best to have a great first week for the kids. You know, I don't, you know, I don't spend a lot of time being bitter about the votes that I was on the, on the losing end of.
And how many cases has the district had, had since the start of school?
We currently have 13.
Oh, no, it was updated. So it's updated.
Oh, is it updated?
It's, nah, 22.
22.
The da-
Yeah, it's updated as of today.
Dashboard gets updated approximately four or five o'clock every evening. So I make updated, so it's on there.
Yeah, 22 cases as of the beginning of school year.
Do you know how many hospitalize?
We don't keep track of that.
We don't keep track of it.
Because that's only part of the reason. People getting so busy, it's worthless stuff.
If you get, if you, if you are, if you're keeping track of hospitalizations, just to talk about HIPAA. When you, when you, when you get such small amounts of people as, as like 22, if we started keeping track of the hospitalizations there, that would get to the point where we don't want to really report that because then it's really obvious who those people are, you know? And so, I mean, like, if you look at the state, at the state's stuff, when they go down to the county and then go down to the zip code, if it's, if it's, if it's below, if it's five or below, they won't give you a number because they don't want to tell you. Because, because it's too specific, um, it's too specific an amount of information for a small amount of people.
But that's where the state was. There was less than five people, kids that were, that were killed by this. It's like, we're throwing out the baby with the bathwater here.
And, and when you get into talking about stuff like that, you're getting into things that are kind of beyond, you know, beyond what we have control of. You're getting into what's beyond our control. Like I said, there are some, there are some, um, lawsuits in the state that are coming, that are, that are gonna be, I think, somebody said the most, the soonest one is the 18th. And there are, but there are two or three. Is that correct? Is that correct? Two or three? Three, okay. And so if there are changes, we will move with those changes, you know? But, but that is not, you know, if, and we didn't talk about it, does anybody, does anybody on the board right now think that joining one of those lawsuits would be a good use of our money?
No.
No, we do not have the resources.
And I don't, I mean, maybe some taxpayers would think it was a good use of our money, but I don't, I don't think any of my constituents would think that way.
I don't think we have the money.
Yeah, that's right. I don't know if we would have the money.
We don't have the money to go to sell the school. They guys, you know, do that.
The money for selling the school is in our capital accounts to fix everything that was discussed at length at our, at our last four facilities committee meetings.
And is it, maybe you can explain this.
I can, I can hear you.
Maybe you can explain this for me, or for everyone. Capital money that comes in from that is designated to go to a specific account.
That money is, yeah. That money is, that was dedicated per vote by us where we had public input that that's what they wanted us to do, was to put that for capital improvements to the school buildings that we still have.
Your ass. I, I voted that, masks. That's how I felt.
I don't, I understand.
Okay. For this, I, the same reason I voted yes tonight, I don't want to be personally sued.
I understand.
Whether we agree or disagree, whether it's conspiracy or not, whether you're black or you're white, really wasn't going to apply to many.
I know. That's why I said, that's why I said that when, if you come to our other meetings, you might have been able to tell if any of us, you know, agree with Governor Wolf, but probably not tonight because we all voted yes.
I voted what I voted last time because I wanted to be a choice.
I understand.
I wanted to wear a mask, wear a mask and just sit there. I'm in the same spot. I really, I don't agree with everything we do. We just all don't agree. At the end of the day, we all work it out. It's a responsibility. And in this particular case, there's an option or there's a number of things. Yep. It's in your, it's in your, it's there.
They don't want to give it out. They don't, they don't want to give it out. Because the government goes after them. Yep, they give it out.
I don't know.
Their partner, their partner put their license on it and they put their name on the line. My doctor said it.
No one, no government, no doctor, no going to college.
They're like, well, you're a student.
There are, there are, there are students that are here that, that have exceptions that, that where, where they have received a doctor's note. There are students here that, that have that. That's correct, isn't it? Is that, is that not correct?
No, that's correct.
And Lancaster, all the students in school is being pretty deep looking at it and say, oh, they all keep the same doctor in the milk. I don't understand why they're doing it. They're just giving it out. And you have no one to complain, no one to complain if people would just, you know, change a little bit.
So one of the.
It's no one's, it's no one's, it's no one's business.
So, so, so what?
It's no one's business about people's medical. So that's what you're covering. If they just say, you have a doctor's note, everyone needs to shut up and accept it no matter what, but they're just telling that, putting the news that they're doing.
One, go, go ahead.
The comment was used, that, that's how I felt.
Yes.
Is there still an option, whether like it or not, whether it's hard or not? There's, there's kids that have the option to get out of it. So I think the same, but until they lift the mandate, whether they like the mandate or not, personally, no.
I know.
But it is what it is. Personally, I do not think it's, when they lift that mandate, I'm gonna be going back the way it was before. I don't care. So it's not something against, it's not less against them. We're just trying to do the job we were handed. It's just got a church going, we gotta make a position, and we made a position.
And I do not want to put my family in the litigation. So whether I agree with the inclusion or not, fighting it and then going into litigation, whether I did or not, is a great expense.
We also pay, we also pay money per council.
Exactly.
And that council, why can't you go pay that money and then let this go? So.
So one of, the only thing that I can see that I didn't address at all was the mental health aspect that Hippy brought up. I, you know, I, I have a lot of the principals in the buildings that are here tonight and I hope that they were listening to that part because, you know, we've had other bullying issues with, with other, with other aspects of, of life, you know, not, not before COVID. So I, I'm certain that they're aware that it's something to watch for. I think that maybe we need to have more of a careful eye on, on that bullying issue. I'm seeing nodding from the back of the room. So I, I do appreciate you bringing that up.
And if you get a doctor's note, here's my other concern. I'm sorry, I'm making it all about me. I apologize. Doesn't that then cause another, why aren't you wearing a mask?
It can, yeah. It can.
And I don't want that for my children.
No, I, I, no, and I, and I understand, but then, but then, you know, that's, I mean, the other op, the other option is to either keep them home or have them wear a mask. So it's, so it's like, you know, I get it when there's a visible sign that that person got, got, got an exception from the, you know, I get that that's, that can be problematic, but I, but I don't know how else to, to try to accommodate those children, you know? That's, you know?
Pushing the mandate, the doctors, that's it. Just pushing that, that's it. You don't even, you push it back where people just turn and put the parents aside and sign off, this town here, it's the parents' responsibility to bring that, the parents' responsibility to sign off. It's no one's business if people wear a mask, not a mask, it's a medical, it's another of their responsibility. It, it, everybody understands, nobody's getting sued.
Right, right.
But we still pushing people and people are getting sued.
Right now, our, our council's advice is to do it the way we are.
For masks.
And until there is a change in, until there is a change in interpretation of the rules based on the current outstanding legal proceedings, we're gonna continue to do what over 87% of the school districts in the county are doing. So do I have any other concerns from the, you can go ahead, you go ahead.
So what is the process for revisiting this, this motion next meeting?
Does anybody in the, in the, on the board right now have any interest in voting again on the health and safety plan this evening?
No. Any one of us could bring it up next meeting or any future meetings.
Yes. So no one, no, no one, is it, no one has any interest in doing it tonight, but any other board meeting, we could have this conversation again.
Okay, appreciate it.
I will just say, I mean, it is gonna, I'm sure this is gonna come up every two weeks in our meetings for quite a while. So the one thing I was just gonna say, um, the one thing that I appreciate, I also have three kids in this school district. I have one in the middle school and I have two in the high school. The lady who just left, I have a daughter that's a senior this year. But what I think I do like about this, I don't say it like, it's not the right word, but I, I guess I understand maybe a little bit that it's, this school district is very black and white and I feel like, I, I can't speak on behalf of everybody here, it's, it's not believable, that we're parents too and this is hard. This is genuinely hard to sit here with people in our community getting upset, and I'm not saying at me or just in general, but just getting upset, you know? I left this last meeting two weeks ago and I, I personally had to spoke, I said something stupid, but I, but my thought is a nice talk to the gentleman and the cowboy hat at the end and I apologize, but I, I'm just like everyone else, you know? We're, we're concerned too. We're not, you know, we don't want to get sued. So I mean, yeah, is there some, all of it is. I mean, they, they have to, they know how to, I guess, like, make us agree to this. Like, I mean, it's, it's, it's scary. I mean, I, you know, and that's part of it. I think I spoke at the last meeting, I listened to a lot of you, it was a hard decision, but I changed my mind. I came in, I was gonna vote in favor of what the administration did and I, I just, I kept it there. I mean, we, I mean, I was speaking for myself, I changed my mind. I heard you. I heard some of the parents, I heard some of the mothers talking about their kids and, and fortunately enough, my kids are, are doing fine, but, but it doesn't, you know, I know they don't like masks, but I really, I heard you. So it's, this is hard for all of us and we can, I so much appreciate, I'll just speak for myself, what, how you all feel. I, we, you know, being quiet here, you know, it's not because I'm trying to be angry and remember that just listening and it's hard to, it's hard to, you know, respond, I guess, to every certain person. The one thing I wanted to say to Julia is that Julia and I in Beverly Albright many years ago would come sit here and we didn't have COVID at the time, but we had Berks Row Elementary, which got really heated. And believe me, I, I, the one thing I.
And budget cuts.
Huh?
Budget cuts.
Oh, budget cuts, yeah.
Bucky forgot that I was there too.
Oh, this is, no, this is dealt with there also, but, but I, like, the one thing I hope, I'm just saying, I mean, I just, it's one thing that I feel like our group is, is a, I think we respect, you know, we try to respect everybody. I, there was a gentleman on the board that sat here and told me to shut up one night and, you know, that I had another guy telling me I, I was rolling my eyes when I was speaking to them. And it was just so disrespected and that's one reason I ran for the board. I, I hope you don't get that from us. I mean, we're not trying to be in any way disrespectful to anybody that's here. We really appreciate everyone's views. I mean, I think that's just what it is. Yeah, we don't get paid for this. This is, this, you know, that last meeting was probably one of the toughest things that gone through lately and, and tonight was certainly not much easier. I just wanted to say a few words. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, it's a lot easier for us, like nine tenths of what we vote on, you know, the general population has no strong opinion on one way or another. So that, those are a lot, those are, those votes are a lot easier. And when we have these close votes or even just not close votes, but, you know, where we have people who have strong opinions about what we should do, it's, you know, again, I really welcome the interaction and I welcome your advocacy for the things that you care about, but sometimes, sometimes, you know, the vote doesn't go the way you want it to and I'm sorry about that, that you, that, I hope you don't feel like you weren't heard. I understand that you feel that you weren't heeded, but I, I hope you don't feel like you weren't heard. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll motion back.
Do I have a second? Meeting adjourned, thank you.